May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Vice Chair Kane.
Here.
Chair O'Donnell.
Here. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which Vice Chair Kane will lead us in?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We normally begin the meeting with eventually verbal communications, and I wanted to make a remark that verbal communications on matters not on the agenda are encouraged as are comments on matters on the agenda. I have at the moment two cards for speakers about matters not on the agenda. I have no other cards. I'm sure I'm going to have at least a couple of other speakers, and I'd appreciate if they would fill out the form and submit it up here unless they've already done it. If any of the members of this Planning Commission have had a subcommittee meeting since our last meeting, I'd invite their reports now.
I have a report.
Commissioner Hansen?
The General Plan Committee met just before this meeting to consider an application on Pine Avenue, which is directly behind Alberta Way, to convert from residential -- there's currently two houses on the property -- to commercial for the ultimate purpose of building an office complex. And we considered the matter, and the sole discretion of the General Plan Committee was to recommend either approval or denial of the zoning change, and it doesn't actually have any actual legal effect because it has to go through Town Council ultimately. But the General Plan Committee nonetheless did recommend to deny the change from residential to commercial, and then it will be up to the applicant if they want to continue to pursue it.
All right, thank you very much. Was there another report? No, okay. Okay, so now we do go to the verbal communications, and that's where I have two cards. The first card is from Angelia Dorr.
I had started and did give you some information about some of these projects, one of the last times that I did a verbal, and I just wanted to tell you that I've updated the schedule to include some very key information regarding the traffic impact analyses and the cumulative effect on these different developments, especially on this end of town. The McCarthy Project, 20,000 square feet, has 69 parking spaces on site with credit for 15 in a parking district. The 401-409 Alberta Way, the size originally was 92,000. It's going to be coming back. I don't know what the revised numbers are, but I just put 60 on here. Parking spaces on the original one was 254. The next one, zoning, got denied so far tonight. Valley Oaks on Winchester and Shelbourne is 30,000 square feet with 128 parking spaces. The next two columns are the columns that show the traffic impact analysis ins and outs during the peak hours of AM and PM. You've got McCarthy with a 56 in, 36 out in the AM, as well as the seven in and two out that are existing now. You've got 15 in, out, in, 33 out, with existing 48, 57 in the peak PM. Alberta Way, this is the only TIA that I had, but I think for comparison purposes it makes sense. For 254 parking spaces, there's 159 cars in, 22 out. For the existing PM, 31 in, 152 out. Winchester, 128 parking spaces, 33 in, eight out in the AM hours, four in and 46 out in the PM hours. I just really don't understand how these numbers make sense. If you recall at the last meeting, the architect and the developer had a little bit of a disagreement on how many people would actually be in those buildings. So the last column I'm showing is actually the number of people based on the architect's number, which was per 100 square feet, and then I used 150 square feet just for comparison purposes. I also showed you a copy of this plan, which is actually something that says that the town is planning to make these modifications. The worst part of it is the strong consideration for a U-turn at Masol, yet no signal. I still don't understand how these town plans can be included in application, to rely or not to rely, when they have not been approved or seen by anybody of a decision body in town. Does that give them implicit approval? And I'm wondering what the DRC can do if this had been in some kind of a proposal and they approved it, no one would even know about it.
Thank you very much.
And the last, just one last thing that I'm asking, I know you have a meeting on the 28th. I'm hoping some of you will agree with me that we really need to have a study session on these traffic impact analyses. I understand the numbers. I can follow the methodology. That's not the question. The question is, they don't make sense. They're just nonsensical, and there's got to be some way that we can modify the way that we're looking at this information that makes sense for the current environment and for traffic in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff Lockridge, 109 Pasailora. I wasn't actually going to talk tonight, but I thought, since you were all here, there's a project over on the north end of town, and I think it had gone through here and was denied, and was appealed at Town Council and got passed at Town Council, and that was 375 Knowles. And I don't know if you're all familiar with it or how it's progressed. And I'm not sure that, because we've talked about, some residents and I have talked about it, I don't think there is a process where the town goes back and looks at what was on the plans, what actually ended up being there, and was it a success or was it a failure? And I wanted to express my feelings about it because one of the first things that they did there, this is, I would also say that I was against it from the beginning because there's like 32 homes there, and they're really close together, and they're not very attractive as far as Los Gatos is concerned, but I guess that's a personal opinion. But on top of that, the irrigation, the drainage system, which wasn't in any plans that I saw when it first came through, ended up being that they have added maybe nine feet of dirt in the back edge. So where it abuts to Villa Vesona, which has three-story buildings, it abuts there and has a, the grade is right at the top of the fence, the seven-foot fence that's at Villa Vesona. So if you can picture this, that there's a, now there's a fence at the top of a fence that's, you know, they have a six-foot fence. And you almost have to go down there and see it, and you have to drive into the Villa Vesona parking lot to be able to see it from that angle. It's, now they have two-story houses, which are, who, they're taller than the three-story structures at Villa Vesona. And since I was very much against it back then, when they put the story poles up, I was pretty sure they weren't taller than the buildings next to them. So the story poles were, I don't know, 28, 30 feet, something like that, and the buildings are eight or nine feet taller than the story poles. But since no one looks at the story poles, no one can remember, but if you go over there, they've added so much land that, and I imagine it takes care of the drainage, and I don't know whether it's part of the process in town, if that's the way it's done, but I would just, would like to say now, we've got another but a worse, Bluebird Lane or Laurel Muse, and it's ugly on top of that.
All right, thank you, and thanks for calling it to our attention and the staff's attention. I have no other cards for these matters, so now we can move to consent items. We really ought to have two matters on the consent because one is the approval of minutes, two is the 360 Bella Vista, which is a continuance, which can be taken as one motion unless someone wants to pull one of them off the consent. If not, I'd entertain a motion. Yes, yes, Commissioner?
I think you pointed to me. Yeah, I will move to approve the consent items.
We have a second? Yes. Commissioner Badami?
I second the motion.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, so the next matter on the agenda is 216 North Santa Cruz Avenue, a conditional use permit application, requesting approval of the use permit for a property, for residents to use on property zone C2. I'd ask for a report. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The project in front of you tonight is the proposal from the applicant Prest Juicery, requesting approval of a restaurant, specifically a juice shop at 216 North Santa Cruz Avenue. The project is being considered by the Planning Commission this evening as a restaurant use requires a conditional use permit in the C2 District. As described in the staff report, the project proposes no seating at this time and is intended to operate in a grab-and-go fashion where customers would purchase juice and/or snack items for off-site consumption. The parking for the overall building is provided by 12 onsite parking spaces and credit for 14 spaces provided through the Parking Assessment District. No written comments or concerns have been received from neighbors on this project. The proposed use is in conformance with the town code and is consistent with the general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the findings in Exhibit Two and consider approval of the project with conditions of approval as shown in Exhibit Three. This completes staff's presentation, however, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Badami?
So I will be recusing myself from item number three due to a perceived conflict of interest. My business location is directly across the street from the project location. I will return for item number four.
Thank you. Was there another hand? Commissioner Hansen?
I had a question, and it was about actually the SoulCycle, because it's all in the same property, and we had heard it before. The SoulCycle is considered, what, from a CUP perspective? I asked because the CUP runs with the land, and my line of thinking was that, you know, this use, you know, was going to be right next door, and then, you know, what happened if SoulCycle left? What would be able to be there afterwards?
SoulCycle was approved as a group fitness facility.
So if SoulCycle leaves without creating a new CUP, you know, or modifying the use of the CUP, the only thing that could be in there would be some type of group fitness activity?
Or another permitted use within the C2 District. That's correct.
Such as retail.
Okay. And then I had a second question, which was, with 805 square feet, I realize there was actually retail in there because there was mention of the Diamond Place, but do we have other retailers on Santa Cruz that are operating in that small of a square footage, 800 square feet?
I'm afraid I don't have that information at this time.
We do. There are a number of small and even smaller than that. I think there's one on either side of the theater or in the 400 to 500 square foot range.
Okay, that helps. Okay, thanks.
Vice Chair Kane?
You are Associate Planner Levi Hill, yes?
That is correct.
I didn't get your name the first time. Are you new with us?
Yes, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Your report, Section D, Restaurant Use in a Downtown Area, makes reference to Ordinance 2021, which we've regarded as pretty important, that we protect retail versus restaurants moving in, and we've had discussions about that and denied restaurant in the past where the use had been previously retail. Your report says that there's something about this project where we need not be that concerned about 2021. Why is that?
So Ordinance 2021 does address the displacement of retail through restaurant uses, but it does not specifically prohibit restaurant uses in the C2 District. It does, however, require that the Planning Commission conduct a careful review of all applications for new restaurant uses in the C2 District through the public hearing process. The proposed use, while determined by staff to meet the definition of a restaurant, is intended to operate in a fashion more similar to retail with the grab-and-go nature of the business. Also, as no seating is being proposed and patrons are expected to consume products off-site, the expected impacts do not appear to be the same as those created by a typical sit-down restaurant.
And most importantly, since the CUP goes with the land, this would in no way prohibit a retail establishment from coming back in in the future?
As currently proposed, the business, Prest Juicery is not actually going to have a full-fledged commercial kitchen, so any modification would most likely be a substantial departure from this CUP and would require either a modification to the CUP or a new CUP.
But retail could go back into it without any process.
It was a binary question. I just want to make sure we're protecting that. Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions? All right, there being no other questions at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward, and we'll have up to 10 minutes to speak, and then anyone in the audience who wants to comment will have five, and then the applicant will conclude with up to five minutes. And please state your name and address. I might remind you too that I had invited cards, and so before you leave tonight, it would be very helpful if you would give us a card with your information on it.
Sure, sure. We have a presentation that we would like to plug into your.
So we require presentations to be provided before 3:00 PM so that we can load it up and check it. Did you bring any printed copies that you can hand out to the commission? Well, I'd leave it up to the chair. We can definitely try to pull it together and insert it.
Let me just say this, I think that's a very good rule. If, on the other hand, we can do this simply, then I would say we should do it, but you're probably the only one that knows.
We can try.
Do it simply.
We can do it very simply.
Okay.
Do you want to start, or do you want me to? Go ahead. Okay, my name is Leanne Daly.
Just a moment.
Sure.
He's going to check something.
Oh, thank you.
Just off the record, if you don't speak into the mic, the millions at home can't hear you.
Okay, be adoring. Thank you. The adoring public. Okay. And also, I brought for the public.
Again, you know, you're not speaking into the mic, but that's okay.
Apologize, I brought for the public, and anybody who's allowed to have it, I brought juice so that you could experience it because you may not know about our product, and let's see if we can.
Thank you.
Get it up, sure.
Thank you.
We'll have to pay them for it.
Or not drink it.
We haven't started yet, right?
No.
I want to know about the shots you have.
The shots?
I've got my intention.
Yeah, basically what we do is a highly concentrated ginger lemon cayenne shot and a turmeric orange shot. And the purpose of these shots, really, the ginger lemon cayenne is really good for, like, heavy vitamin C to blow out a cold that's coming on. And the turmeric, turmeric has like anti-inflammatory qualities, and it has enough turmeric in it that it can really help, you know, if you've been running or whatever, to kind of restore flexibility.
So that means, in fact, they're not alcoholic?
They're not alcoholic. They're not, but you know, we have an ad.
You just lost his vote.
We have an ad that says, want to feel better, have a shot.
You're all set up now, so I think we can start the time and start your presentation.
So I'm going to tell you guys a little bit about Prest Juicery. It's a six-year-old juice company that started in Brentwood, California, in a 22-foot closet. And because the space was so small, all of the juice was made off-site, so we don't do any production onsite at all. Everything is made in the Central Valley of California near Fresno, and it is shipped through the cold chain to our stores every single night. Our real mission is to bring nutrient-dense nutrition to everybody. And, you know, we basically make it taste great. We make it really simple to pick what you want to have, and we make it for everybody. So little kids drink it, adults drink it, my mother-in-law drinks it back in New York. And what we've also done is kind of demystified the menu in a juice bar. You know, we've made it organized into greens, fruits, signature blends, which are like almond milks that have high protein, shots, as you mentioned, as well as a frozen product called Freeze, which is just, think juice but colder. And they're very delicious. They're gluten-free, dairy-free, and as I said before, there's no food production at all. We basically just sell bottled juices, and we serve cups of this Freeze product, as well as heated, steamed almond milk beverages that have shots of turmeric, beet, and other sort of adaptogenic ingredients. Juicing, a lot of people wonder if it's a fad. Juice has been around for a long time. This is just a new form of juice that is made from whole non-GMO fruits and vegetables and is minimally processed. It's basically made with a hydraulic press. We have been featured, it's, you know, a popular product at this point, six years in. We've been featured in a lot of fashion magazines and food magazines, so there's a lot of interest, particularly among women between the ages of like 18 and 50, particularly women with kids, because this is a way to get your kids to drink their vegetables because the juice is so yummy. We also have a blog called the Chalkboard Mag Blog, which is sort of like a lifestyle publication that we do digitally. We have 400,000 people who come through every month to look at it, and that shows you the growth of the Chalkboard Mag. There is a great deal of interest just generally around more nutrient-rich and vibrant foods, and Prest Juicery really falls into that category. We also are very serious about making sure that the kinds of health claims that we made are backed by science. So the passion around juice is backed by an entire medical board that has done some of the first studies in validating the nutrient denseness of the juices themselves, as well as the benefit of juice cleanse and juice fast in helping with weight loss for some people. For some people, like myself, I use it to give my system a rest, and it helps also with kind of getting your gut imbalance. This is a summary of the findings from the recent UCLA study that we completed, so we do have some scientific evidence backing up what we're doing. We don't make, we are not in a hurry to make health claims that we can't back up with science, and so we've done some of the first studies around using juice fast as sort of a part of a healthy lifestyle. And I think that's all I have. I think you're next.
My name is Beth Nelson. I'm an architect, and I'm the Director of Construction and Development at Prest. So the first couple of slides are just a few stores, just to give you an idea of what they look like. Unfortunately, this photo was taken at night, but the stores are generally really light, fresh, clean feeling, not too much going on, just keeping it really simple. And the customer area is really small because it's not about coming in and sticking around. It's about coming in, getting your juice, interacting with the employee to figure out what juice is right for you, and then moving on with the rest of your day. So that's just three quick samples. Kind of where the design comes from, we've got some vertical elements, pops of color, light stuff, diagonal shelving. Here's a site plan, just in case anyone is unfamiliar with the site. We're looking at, right next to SoulCycle. And here's a floor plan. So if you can see, on the right side is the customer area. It's really only the first, I can't read that, but I think it says seven feet from when you walk into the door to the counter. Then you have the counter, and then the employee, and then the back of house. We're putting in a couple of sinks, but it's not a heavy prep use area. There's, you know, sinks that are required by the Health Department for sanitation. We're putting in a fridge for some cooling to keep our product cold. The bathroom is existing, but other than that, we're doing just very light touches. It's obviously not a commercial kitchen. Here's a rendering of what, right now, we're thinking the Los Gatos store would look like. The counter, fridge, and then the freeze machines. It's really simple. And then our materials, which are fresh, light, natural, kind of California style. And that's all we've got. We're not planning any exterior changes other than our signage. I thought we had a slide of that, but I guess we don't. I thought we had a slide of that, but I guess we don't.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
Based on the information that was in our packet and the presentation you made, which is very good, thank you. It doesn't appear that, that you're going to have patrons staying in the store. They're going to come and get their juice and go. But the current parking situation in Los Gatos with the parking district and whatnot, it would enable you to have up to 12 seats. And my question is, do you even need that? If we were to remove that as a condition that you would have seating, would that be a problem for you?
The owner of the property would like the seating to stay in the use, but it's not...
Because of a future potential use?
Yeah, but I don't think it was 12 seats. Was it 12 seats? It was 12.
It is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Janoff?
It's a small space to start with at 850 square feet, but the area that you have identified in your plan for the patrons to come in and purchase and go is really tight. I mean, it really, at seven by 13, it allows you for maybe three or four people in there and then you've got the swinging door and people coming in and out. Is it sufficient?
Yeah, we have a very similar footprint. Some stores have, are a little wider so that it's a little more generous, but we really like the idea that when you walk in the door, you're immediately greeted by the staff member and that right behind the staff member is our product. Our product is small, so it's hard for people to see. So, we like that intimate environment. We like the fact that, you know, if there's multiple people in the space, they're all kind of involved in the same conversation. It's not just like, you know, wait your turn. But we find that it really does work for us and we like the environment that it creates.
Other questions? Vice Chair Kane?
Under the old design, the bathroom was in the back, right near the back door. You're being a retail slash food or juice provider. If I came in to buy some juice, would I have access to that bathroom?
If the law says you have to have access, then you have access.
Well, you ought to know that.
You know, if it's required, sure, we'll make sure that that's, that's known to the employees, but it's kind of interpreted differently in a lot of jurisdictions, so it's really what you tell us to do, we'll do.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, we'll get to, we'll ask staff on that too before we're through, so yes, go ahead.
That's what I was going to do. Does staff have a comment on that, that it's required or not, if it's a public?
I don't have the building code in front of me, so that would be a building code issue and I'm assuming that's not required. We have a number of establishments in town that may have restrooms because they have to have them for the employees, but they may not be readily accessible to customers. And so, if that is a major concern and we want to add a condition to the satisfaction of the building official that they comply with the law, then we can do that.
I was just thinking, it affects their security.
We really do have to know whether it's required. We also have to know whether the commission would want it even if it's not required, so we could discuss that. I'm not sure whether you're saying they should or they shouldn't.
I'm leaning towards shouldn't because it's right in the back where they probably got...
I agree with that.
All right.
I would just offer that, you know, obviously they've looked at it, they have, understand the implications and apparently feel that it's appropriate in the configuration that they're proposing.
It's a very difficult location. We're open to the public, I think, and unless the law requires it or the majority of commissioners want to impose that, I think it would be safer not to have that used for the public. How many locations do you have?
It's a fluid number, but I think we're a little over 40.
Today. How many?
I think we're around 40, 42-ish.
Okay, so you're a chain. Now, you say that the owner, the property owner, wants the 12, the ability to have 12 seats. You don't need that in your business at all, right? And the only thing we have before us is your business, so I'm just trying to think about that a little bit. Then your hours, you have hours from 7 till 9 during the week and then 7 till 8 on the weekend, is that right?
Yeah, I'm, my understanding is 7 to 9 every day of the week.
And that's not what our report says.
If there's a discrepancy at 7, 8 then. I worked for the company for about two weeks, so I apologize.
Well, it's good for us to know what you're asking us because that's not what it says.
Yes, all right. Well, the establishment opens earlier than most food locations because we're serving a, you know, people who are exercising and people with young children quite a bit.
Commissioner Birch?
Yeah, in the conditions of approval, item number five is the hour of operations. Is that what you're referencing?
Well, I'm referencing page three where it says what the hours are, but if it, does that conflict?
No, that, so the hours of operation, excuse me, Monday through Friday are 7:00 AM till 8:00, I'm sorry, 7:00 till 9:00 Monday through Friday and 7:00 till 8:00 Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, but I understand them to say that as far as they're concerned, that's in error and they're really asking us the same hours each day, so it's something we could consider.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll just have to change the condition of approval as we get to the end.
Commissioner, Chair O'Donnell's question made me think of another question.
Sure.
As you may well know that, you know, because of our general plan and our vision for town, you know, we're very much about not having a lot of chain retail. So, when you mentioned the 42 locations, I wondered, are we going to, I don't know where, how many you have in the, in the South Bay area or in the Bay area and, you know, are we going to be seeing them in Campbell and Saratoga and, you know, and so on? Just let me know what you have now. I mean, I realize the future is, you know, not all set.
Yeah, our strategy is not to have them in every community and they are quite small and we really carefully select where we put them. You know, we have one on Santana Row. I think that's the closest. It's about nine miles from here. We're really trying to place them in places where individuals are walking and exercising and there are mothers and children and you sort of, the whole story of the product really is to serve that audience and it is not our intention to make them within three miles of each other, for example. And it is not our intention to have large seating and all that in any of our other locations. This is a strategy for our business. It's allowed us to expand into communities that we can serve effectively and it's been part of our success. So, I don't think that it's going to be a situation where we'd put something so close that it would take the audience that comes to Los Gatos to some other community nearby, if that's what you're asking.
Sort of, but you did say that the closest location would be, would be in Santana Row that you know of right now.
Yeah, and it's open.
And then, since you're going to be, if this were approved, you would be next door to SoulCycle. I think when we heard about SoulCycle there in Palo Alto, do you have a location, do you have other locations next to SoulCycle?
I believe we have a couple. Yeah, I mean, mostly...
Do you have one in Palo Alto right now?
Is there a Palo Alto next to a SoulCycle?
We have a store in Palo Alto and it's in the Stanford Shopping Center, but it's not associated with or next to SoulCycle.
Okay, thanks.
I also wanted to add, if I could, about the formula concern. We really do make an effort with all of our stores to make them unique. We use a similar palette so that they, they're sort of cohesive, but each one is treated individually. We're not really into just like rolling something out wholesale.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask them? One moment, please. Did you want to ask? Go ahead.
Vice Chair Kane? I have a question for staff, if I may.
Please.
Are they formula retail?
They are not formula retail, they're restaurant use. Either way, they would be before the Planning Commission because formula retail also requires a conditional use permit downtown.
Yeah, not formula retail.
Because they're restaurant use.
Thank you.
Okay, one, just one moment, please. I'm trying to think if I had anything else myself. Your hours, can you tell me what your experience has been? I'm not judging them, I'm trying to get some information. You're open early and you're open fairly late, I think. Is your experience, you're next to SoulCycle, I don't know, I don't recall SoulCycle's hours, but I assume they must be somewhat consistent with that, or do you know?
I don't, honestly do not know, but we try to be open, consistent to the patterns of exercise because the consumption is connected very much so to replenishing after exercise.
But if you don't know the hours, then you don't know.
Of SoulCycle? I don't, no, I don't.
So, why are you open till 9 o'clock at night?
Because people exercise before work and after work and...
Just exercise anyplace or I thought maybe it had something to do with SoulCycle?
Well, certainly proximity to a town center where there are exercise studios and SoulCycle in this particular case, of course, yes. We try to put it in a place that's convenient to the sort of pattern and habit of exercising and then walking out. It's right there for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right, if not, I have no other cards. Oh, I do now. Angelina Dorner?
I have a... There we go.
Thank you. So...
Hello, Angelia Dorner. I'm still from the Almond Grove and I'm still very proud. Anyway, I just had a couple of questions. You know that people in the Almond Grove and the university area were extremely upset with SoulCycle as to the lack of parking, the intention that they have 57 cycles on an hourly basis coming in and out of town, early hours and late hours. So, I'm wondering, I'm very confused about how many total parking spaces are actually allocated to the combined space or to that particular building and how many are actually allocated to this space for the parking district. And whatever that is, and I'd love to hear that confirmed, whatever that is, how about a condition that that space be held open for additional parking for SoulCycle so that it can't be used by somebody else?
We'll certainly discuss this with staff.
Oh, I'm not done.
Pardon me?
I'm not done.
Okay, I thought it was a question.
That'll eat up my time. No, I'm just, I'm just a little, little concerned. I mean, I think SoulCycle, they're right next to SoulCycle. It's fabulous for their business. They're going to be fabulous. I hope it doesn't hurt Dolce across the street. Personally, I'll go for the unhealthy stuff across the street at Dolce compared to the healthy stuff, but, you know, I just, I'm, so this is fine, this is great, but there's something that, with the parking situation out back, that I just don't want to see those spaces used for the next thing that comes down the line in that building and why they couldn't be made available or allocated to the SoulCycle. And when I tried to figure out some numbers on the total parking spaces available for that building and the parking district allowances, things just weren't adding up and I know I was just probably missing some information, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers other than the applicant? If not, the applicant can come back up and either address the concern that was raised or anything else in the form of rebuttal or anything else you want to add. You don't have to.
I don't have anything to add. Thanks.
I don't, I don't either.
We have a question? Yes, Commissioner Janoff?
For the applicant. Given that there's a concern about parking and you don't have any seats planned in your facility at the present, is it your sense that your traffic is essentially pedestrian traffic? So, what's your, what's your assessment of what the, what the net impact on parking might be from the addition of your business?
I don't know the full ecosystem of the parking situation in the, in the village at all, so I don't really feel qualified to answer, but I think that we're going to have people who are already there getting something and then going, so it may be like a, you don't want to double, double count the parking spaces because there are probably people who are already parked there. And it's just a little, literally two and a half minute interaction to buy a bottle of juice and get out. That's the business model.
So, again, in this particular location, you're anticipating more of pedestrian traffic rather than somebody driving in from out of town, parking, going in, getting a drink?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Other questions? If not, thank you very much. I will close the public comment and open the matter now for discussion by the commissioners. Commissioner Hanson?
I did have a question for staff on the parking. So, I heard that, that the, I heard that the issue from their perspective was that the landlord wants to keep the, keep the seats available and I presume because of the potential of some other use that might be in thereafter Press Juicery if it didn't, you know, if they left. But if it wasn't in the CUP, I mean, how would that, how would that prevent them, because the CUP runs with the land, then it would, they couldn't ever get seats if they needed it unless they came back to us?
They would have to come back, pay 75% of the approximately $8,000 fee to ask for seats.
Okay. And then I was just trying to understand the table on page four, I meant to ask this earlier. So, in the table, it says SoulCycle, it says max allowed, well, it says total, I think it's parking in the final column, right? 23 spots and then three that backs into the 12 seats because it's four per parking space. And these are actual parking spaces or they're credited from the district?
There are 12 parking spaces provided onsite and 14 credits provided through the district.
So, this combined total adds up to the 26th and it's a combination, 14 and 12?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Birch?
I'll go ahead and make the comment that I would be ready to go ahead and make a motion unless we want to have...
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. So, I will just go ahead and put out there that I really like this idea. I think beyond just taking a look at the adjacency to an exercise facility, I also know that as you get into summer, there's a lot of students and a lot of activity downtown and I think this is a nice, something different that would offer the students and younger groups that hang out later at night down there, something different to get, so I like it. I think it's a great concept. It's a great use of a small space, which honestly for the town would have been hard to find a retail space that has a need for something that small, so I think it's a, it's going to be a very good addition to what may have been a difficult spot.
I too. I agree with you on that. I think it's a good use. The only thing I just would like to ask staff a little bit more about is the seating. It's much easier to approve this as it is without seating, but I worry a little bit about if the use changes, and it sounds like their plan would not involve seats, but assuming for one reason or another that they don't stay there and somebody else comes in and the use permit runs with the land, we're approving 850 square feet, which would include seats for 12, which I find very difficult to believe how you can put it in 850 square feet. I suppose you could, but is it necessary that we approve the seating for some reason today?
So, although no seating's being proposed now, if another restaurant use was to occupy the space, they wanted to provide seating, they would most likely have to install a commercial kitchen facilities, which would be a substantial departure from the CUP that you're reviewing tonight and would most likely require a modification to the CUP or a new CUP.
But the question simply becomes, do, is there any reason why we would have to approve the 12 seats tonight? There's nothing before us that shows a use for 12 seats and you're suggesting to me, if the restaurant use became more intensive, more space of the 850 square feet would be used for things like kitchens, but it doesn't really get to a fairly simple question. Do we have to approve parking with this use?
You do not have to approve seats.
But seating.
You do not have to approve seats with this use. I think the applicant has proposed that they won't put any seats, you know, and they're not proposing and that's not their typical model, but if another juice or frozen dessert place comes in, if they're unsuccessful and wants to put one seat in the front or two, then they have to come back and go through the entire process with the Planning Commission for a modification of the use permit. But you do have that ability to say they can't have seats.
But from what you pointed, I'm just wondering if, for example, we said, you know, I'm not trying to be draconian here, I don't see 12 seats. I just don't see 12 seats because I don't have anything before me which would justify. On the other hand, if somebody came in and said, "I want one or two or three seats," I could see that, but again, that's about where I am, so I'm just trying to see where the, where the commission is, if you're concerned about the 12 seats or not. First, I think Commissioner Janoff had her hand up first.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment. I think it's a reasonable request to include the 12 seats. Yeah, I'd just like to comment. I think it's a reasonable request to include the twelve seats. If you think about it, that's a fairly small seating area. It could be quite small in terms of actual tables and chairs. I think you could, you could envision a small space that did serve ice cream or did serve other kinds of juice or had a slightly different business model that included a place for people to sit while they're waiting a brief period of time. And it seems reasonable to include that for the potential future use, which is a reasonable one, rather than force a future applicant possibly to have to go through the renewal of the CUP to request seats.
Okay, I've got two more hands up, but I think Commissioner Birch had her hand up second.
And following up on that, anyone that came in there and, and did place seats in is still going to be subject to building code and fire code. So if the concern was that twelve seats is going to be extremely crowded and unmovable, it can't be. It has to be ADA accessible. There has to be a limit based on the open space to how many seats a fire marshal would even allow in the space. So it's not going to wind up being a crammed, everybody's on top of each other. It has to be ADA accessible and meet all fire and building codes. So while we may have twelve on there, depending on what format somebody may bring in front of us later with a kitchen, that's great, but the fire marshal has the ultimate approval on this and code, so it may not even be twelve. So I feel comfortable with it just knowing that our own building codes will take over.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
At first, my first reaction was actually if they didn't need the seats, why have them? But then I, after I thought about it, and especially in light of, you know, a lot of the testimony that was said at the Town Council Priority Setting Session and that we've heard in previous meetings about the difficulties for some applicants getting through CUPs. I, I don't think twelve seats is that much. And, and I think this is a really attractive use for Los Gatos. It's very complimentary to SoulCycle and I, you know, I thought about, it's, it's sort of like a, you know, a so much more elegant version of jammed with juice, which, you know, is hugely popular with young and older people. And I think it's going to be, you know, great for downtown and I, I don't think it's worth putting additional conditions. And I'd sure hate to make it hard for another, if, if they change their model or if, if the use change, that they'd have to worry about coming back just to get twelve seats.
Okay, Vice Chair Kane?
But they don't want the seats. Their business plan seems to be turnover. Come in, buy a glass of juice, get out, so the people behind you can come in. They're not asking for seats. I don't know if I'm going to get any support on it, but I think in the future, if somebody wanted to do something, they'd have to de novo, start all over again and see if they could get seats. I'm, I'm suggesting to the chair at least, that item seven in conditions of approval, which currently reads the maximum number of seats shall not exceed twelve, change it to the maximum number of seats shall not exceed, exceed zero. They're not asking for seats. Why are we?
Well, yeah, I, I would just say that I'm going to ask Commissioner Birch to make her motion. Since it runs with the land, it doesn't make much difference what they're asking for. If, if we in fact give them twelve, we should assume that at some point there will be twelve. It may not happen, but that's what we're approving. So I understand your concern. That was an early concern I had. However, perhaps I've been persuaded by three of my fellow commissioners. Commissioner, pardon me, Commissioner Birch?
Can I ask one quick question of staff before I make my motion? Is it typical downtown that we do construction from nine until seven on weekends and holidays?
Construction anywhere in town, the code says.
I was just curious if when you, really, even right there downtown?
Correct.
Huh, okay. All right, so I'm going to make a motion. Now I've got to find my findings. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve conditional use permit application U-16-007, located at 216 North Santa Cruz Avenue, considering a request of approval to allow a restaurant use on property zone C2 APN 52904085. And I can find the requirements that this is categorically exempt from CEQA, Section 15301 existing facilities, as required by Section 4B of the redevelopment plan for Central Los Gatos Redevelopment Project, that it meets the use set forth in the town's redevelopment plan and as required by Section 29.20.190 of the Town Code for granting a conditional use permit.
All right, do we have a second? We have two seconds here. I think, all right, Commissioner, Commissioner Janoff? So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. So any comments on staff, like appeal?
There are appeal rights, so anyone that's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The appeal must be filed within ten days and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Chair?
Yes?
Now that we voted, can I have a juice?
Go ahead.
May I have?
I may have to report you to a higher authority, but.
Let's go with my pretzels.
Are we off the record? Why did she take our juice?
You are.
Proud resident of Almond Grove, give us back our juice.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, if we're through with our juice escapades, why don't you get up and, shall I? I'll take a five-minute recess, so this is a very serious issue going to be dealt with. Receive a report on the final draft bicycle and pedestrian master plan. So I'd ask for the staff's report.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to have Mr. Bob Cass provide the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Joel. It's been a while since I've sat up here. And I think the last time I talked with you was on the tree, Heritage Tree stuff, so this is a little bit different. So tonight, you're being asked to really receive a report on the draft bicycle and pedestrian master plan, provide comments to staff, and we will include those comments in the final report that we will be forwarding to the City Council on May seventh. Town Los Gatos does not currently have a bicycle or pedestrian master plan. Many, many communities in California do. Many of them in the Bay Area and in the South Bay do as well. We do have a general plan and a sustainability plan, which sets a lot of the groundwork and has some of the, the framework for what development of a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. But, but we don't have a document that we can refer to that addresses bicycle and pedestrian issues per se. So one of the top goals of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, shortly after it was established, was to work with the town in developing a bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the, the Town of Los Gatos. And the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, it, it does a number of things. It, it really provides a roadmap for the town's investment in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And it also positions the town to compete more successfully for a whole host of funding from the state and federal funds that may flow through the state for bicycle and pedestrian related projects. This is really timely with respect to the Measure B funding that's been approved by the voters, that the VTA is now going through a whole host of criteria on determining how that money's going to be allocated. Should I continue?
Yes, we'll have questions when you're.
Sure. I just wanted to kind of go through the timeline that we've been and, and what's kind of happened in developing this. So in, in December of 2015, the BPAC established this as a goal. In April of 2016, so not quite a year ago, but about ten months ago, the council approved a consultant agreement with Placeworks, which used to be DCE. And they've done quite a few things with the town. They worked on the sustainability plan, the housing element and on the general plan to help us with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. In July of last year, we held our first community meeting with a consultant and it was very well attended. In September, there was a second community meeting, talking about identifying potential projects or, or, or conditions. And that was followed up by bicycle and pedestrian counts, which were the first bicycle and pedestrian counts that had been conducted townwide. We had really a great response from volunteers helping us. Council members, city staff, and bicycle and pedestrian advisory commissioners participated in that count, which was done on a Wednesday and a Saturday after kids got back to school. I do want to note the BPAC Chair Jeff Lockridge was one of the count volunteers, helped us out with that as well. In December of this, December, January, really, a lot of this started to kind of coalesce and the consultant was developing that specific recommendations. And the BPAC had a, a very focused priority setting sessions on the identified projects, both in the bike area, the pet area, as well as sort of townwide goals and, and action items. I do want to mention also that we also conducted an online survey for community input on bike and pet issues, and we had over nine hundred and fifty responses, which is really phenomenal. We kind of had it in two waves. The first wave was through sort of traditional social media, Facebook, our Nextdoor and those modes. Second one, we pushed it out to the major employers, so we got a really great response from the town's major employers and also through the Chamber of Commerce. So that was really positive and that kind of confirmed and directed us to various other areas where we needed to look at bike and pet improvements. So in your report, you were provided a link to the bike and pet master plan. And if you had a chance to look at that, it's really quite, quite a nice document. It's got a lot of stuff in it. It kind of goes over the existing conditions and, and needs of the town, kind of identifies where we have bike and pet systems and network, looks at some of the gaps that we, we have. It goes through goals, policies and actions, and then it has a chapter on recommendations, which is a long list of projects in various categories. There's a chapter which is very helpful for staff, which is implementation and funding. It has, identifies a whole bunch of funding sources. Consultants set that up with hyperlinks, which is really nice, so we can go to the actual sites to get information on that. And then the appendices has all the survey results, collision information, count information, et cetera, et cetera. So just to touch on some of the key highlights from the report, that in the, in the Goals Policy section, I mean, a lot of these are kind of motherhood and apple pie, but it, it really is the intent of the Bike and Ped Master Plan to improve safety for bikes and pets in the community and, and really is a, as a kind of, you know, in conjunction with that, it, we want to encourage walking and biking to reduce vehicle trips. So this is, is also, should be viewed in the context of a strategy to help us manage traffic within the community. The more kids and parents that we can get using bikes and walking for regular business, the less vehicles we'll have to contend with. I mean, we have certainly a lot of vehicles that are not doing just day-to-day trips from residents. But, but it is a strategy to help us address traffic congestion in town. We also, one of the major goals and policies to, is to eliminate the serious injuries and fatalities. And if you've heard of Vision Zero, which is a, really a nationwide or international movement to eliminate fatalities from vehicles, pets, bikes, we want to do that as well and, and really reduce those injuries and fatalities. We want to develop really a cohesive and connected, low-stress bike and pet network. So, so that means that people feel comfortable walking from one place to the next, to the next. Excuse me. It's cohesive, it's connected and, and it's comfortable. You don't feel stressed when you're out there walking around or riding your bike. High-quality facilities are a goal. As I mentioned, position the town to compete for bike and pet grants. And kind of as a, as a, an add-on is the Safe Roots to Schools study that was recently adopted by the council or, or received by the council. And we, we've really made an effort to try and integrate the Bike and Ped Master Plan with the Safe Roots to Schools study so that we don't just address the school stuff. This is broader, but we also recognize that managing bike and pet movements and encouraging people to walk to schools is a really high priority of the, of the town. And so that, that is in here in a, in an integrated fashion. Some of the high-priority bike recommendations that came out of both the consultant's work as well as the priority setting that the BPAC did, was a connection to the Los Gatos Creek Trail from Highway Nine. Currently from Highway Nine, there is no direct connection to Los Gatos Creek Trail. Highway Nine has a lot of bike traffic and pet traffic. And there is no formal way. There's a kind of an informal dirt path that people can take down there, so that, that's a high priority. Installing what we call sharrows, which are those markings that have a bicycle legend with some arrows, and so they're called sharrows, share the road, on University Avenue, which gets a lot of, has the potential to have a lot of bicycle traffic and no. gets a lot of, has the potential to have a lot of bicycle traffic and no real comfortable recognition that bikes and cars are mixed. So the commission, as well as the consultant, felt that was a high-priority project. Kind of a third one, which is, is kind of expanded, and that is to create a network of protected bike lanes that would be along Los Gatos Boulevard, Blossom Hill Road, Roberts Road, and then maybe eventually connecting to Winchester Boulevard. And protected bike lanes are bike lanes that have some sort of physical barrier, whether it's channelizers or delineators or some kind of curb, that provide the bicyclists with a lot more comfort and protection in riding. And so one of the items that we've discussed quite a bit with the BPAC is if we can create kind of a, a network of those facilities, it's gonna encourage more people to ride bikes. There's a lot of discussion throughout the process of improving the connection east and west across town. We're very limited because of the constraints of Highway 17, and we have Lark, Blossom Hill Road, and Highway 9, and it's, none of those are very comfortable for bikes or pets. And one of the items, it's the big-ticket item, would be some kind of new pedestrian bridge across Highway 17, probably around the Nino area and connecting over to the Los Gatos Creek Trail area. And then, lastly, was, in addition to that, improving the access across the existing Highway 17 crossings, and particularly where the on-and-off ramps occur. Anyone who's walked or biked across those, know it's not a very comfortable place to be as a pedestrian or as a bicyclist. So that's on the bike side. On the ped side, what the consultant identified is, is really enhancing and improving a number of the existing crosswalks and crossings in town, and specifically, kind of highlighted Main Street, and that's one that's been identified in the Safe Roots to Schools study as well, particularly around Los Gatos High School. There are a number of what we call uncontrolled crosswalks, which are mid-block crosswalks. They don't have any flashing lights, they don't have any special pavement, and there's a lot of those in the downtown, there's a lot of those on Santa Cruz Avenue, there's quite a few on University. And so that whole sort of central area of town where there's lots of pets and bikes at night, might be a little dark, people are walking out, there's planter boxes, there's no way of really making that as comfortable as the consultant feels it would like, or the commission felt it was, as well as the public. So attacking those crosswalks on Santa Cruz, University, and Main Street near the high school were really high priorities for pets. Improving the Highway 9 intersections at University, Santa Cruz, and also Masal were identified as high-priority pedestrian projects. And then, really broadly, there's a lot of locations, and there's some maps and other information in the plan, to look at infill sidewalks for some of the more outlined areas, especially on safe routes to school. So how do we get, how do we get, particularly in the areas which don't, some of them don't have sidewalks, or the development patterns are not sidewalks? So are there ways to, like we did on Shannon recently, improve the infrastructure so that pedestrians and kids and dog walkers can feel comfortable walking? So the next steps are really, we had the Bike and Pet Advisory Commission took action on this at their meeting in February 2nd. I keep looking at Jeff because he'll correct me if I'm wrong. And the Parks Commission received this report last night, Planning Commission tonight, Transportation and Parking Commission will receive a report on this tomorrow night, and then hopefully we will move forward to the council on March 7th. And that ends my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions and take copious notes.
We'll have a number of questions. I've already been lobbied by the vice chair, so I'm gonna call on him first.
First, I wanna say to those involved, these are some extraordinary documents. I read them, and I was overwhelmed. I wondered why you had the references to the two documents that were attached, the document center for the view and the document center for appendices. And when I opened them, I realized, the first one is 110 pages long, the second one is 164 pages long, and I went, oh, no. But in reading them, I learned tons of information about the town. I thought I knew, no, I didn't know. This, this, everybody should read these two documents. They're extraordinary. I would, I would have some format comments. I know you know what you're doing, and you have Section A and pages 1 to 15, and they're... I would think for normal people, you might wanna number the thing all the way through, so that if I wanna talk to you about page 78, we have a common frame of reference, we can all go to page 78, as opposed to B4, A5, Z22. Keep your system, but in the bottom right-hand corner, have a fluid numbers, from 1 to 110, 1 to 164. In the format that we were provided, I couldn't print a particular page. And I think your technology might need some tweaking, so that if I wanna print page 75, I can print page 75 without having to print 110 pages. That opinion became stronger and stronger as I read, because there's so many important things in there. I didn't know there was a fatality, and your charts show whole bunches of collisions on North Santa Cruz, Maine, and I didn't know that. And that alone could get me to slow down a little bit, or not ride a bike, one or the other. You have a-
Let us guess.
You have a, a section where you're talking about partnerships with the hospital, the chamber, it's P5-8, and I thought you might wanna add service clubs. There's two Rotary Clubs, there's Kiwanis, there's this club, there's that club, and many of those service clubs have an annual project. I know what we did was put up some benches here and work up, pull up, we could tie right into this and partner with you guys on particular projects as you have them listed. To staff, there were so many comments that were outstanding from the 950 people who responded. One of them, I don't know what this would mean to council, but I would try to find a way to incorporate the requests for bike pedestrian, BP safety, into some planning commission guidelines. Like, we have a whole number of standards and suggestions on what to build and how to build it, and I could see another one being there to encourage a developer to specifically comply with what the BP is trying to achieve. I have other comments, but people probably wanna talk. Just one more for the moment. Appendix D on page D13, in your headline, "Biking is horribly misspelled." I'm assuming that was a test, and I hope I've passed.
Which, which page was that?
Appendix D, page D13. It's in the headline, you know, bold print, and it says "Bikin' Bikin'," and I think what you wanna say is biking. Like I said, I think that's a-
I'm just gonna move down the line here. Commissioner Birch-
So I have three items.
Okay.
First is, one of the items that you noted was some of the outlying neighborhoods and safety, and this hits close to home for me. My children bike to Fisher Middle School almost every day. They refuse to do it in the rain, but almost every day. And as we go through the neighborhood from where I live, I live right off of Lark and right behind the car wash, there, right? So there's wonderful residential streets they can take all the way to school, however, a number of them are only one-way stop signs, so there's, through traffic, and just due to trees and things, the visual is not there. So how would we, as parents that live in those areas, get that information to you to say, we would like you to research these three intersections along what, I know it's not my kids, because, just my kids, because as they go, they pick up probably like 20 friends that all live in these neighborhoods that take the same route. So there's a number of us that have collectively expressed concern about these. What's the best way to get that information to you?
That's correct. Press that button.
That's the good button.
I mean, we'll note that here as well, and I'm not as familiar with the Safe Roots to School study and whether that was identified as one of the, the school walking routes.
Wasn't.
Because-
That's why I'm bringing it up, because it sounds like it might get captured here. So would there be a way through Nextdoor or something that you might do a continued outreach, requesting perhaps some of us to-
Yeah, and again, for adding stop signs in neighborhoods like that, there's a process that we go through to look at whether they're wanted.
I would just like a sign that says "Children Crossing." I mean, it doesn't have to be anything profound. We are a residential street, but-
We can, we can take a look at expanded routes beyond what was identified in the Safe Roots to see if those make sense and there's any enhancements that we could do. I mean, we can note that as a comment in the bike-
And I assume you would entertain it if, for example, Commissioner Birch, were you sent, sent you an email specifically identifying-
Right. That's what I was gonna say, if I could tell some of the people, like, send it to this person, Joel?
Sure, I mean, you can, you can always send emails of that nature to Parks and Public Works through our general email box. There's also a contact-
Oh, I know where to find Jeff.
Email on the Parks and Public, I mean, on the BPAC page. The online, there's an online tool which we have right now, which I, thank you, which is a mapping tool, which is, there's a link to that on the BPAC webpage, and those comments we're kind of gathering, and we will be including those in the Bike and Pet Master Plan.
Okay, the online, that would help.
That might be one of the better-
That might be the best one to send my neighbors to. So my second question, this is a significant document, and I know we probably all have a lot of comments, is the best way for us to do this, though, is to, you know, not that I have a lot, but just if we do have any bullet point items, to email them? I don't have them all right here in front of me, but if I did have some comments or a couple of things I thought?
I mean, the objective here was to get comments from the commission, not to force anybody to move this forward, but we really do wanna get this adopted for the timeliness of competing for particularly Measure B. However, if you have bullet points or comments beyond maybe what reflects some of the comments you're able to make tonight as the commission, absolutely, it's still in the review stand phase, and you can certainly email those or submit those through the website.
I think, other than what I point out, I can't think of any right now. It's gonna be when I go back and look at it, so that's what I'm saying. So then, my only other comment was, I really appreciated what you were saying about the crosswalks, particularly on Santa Cruz Avenue, because the other night, I came downtown, it was raining, and because of those planters, a woman pushing a stroller stepped out in the street, and, I mean, thank God, traffic is so slow, but I still had to slam on my brakes, because I truly couldn't see her because of how dark and it was raining, and it was after, you know, doors had closed their windows. And I actually had thought of that, that we really need those to have a push button, some kind of light that flashes. It could have been-
And that specifically is identified in the plan?
Right. So I just would hope that as it goes down the street, that's definitely identified as a priority, because I could see that being an unfortunate incident.
Before I move down the line, I would just say anecdotally, I tried to walk from my house here tonight, almost got run over. I mean, you had to be wise enough not, it was like having the bull come at you. I stood away from the bull to see if it was gonna stop. It did, and then I proceeded, but you feel like you need to wave, because they can't see. This person was not trying to run over me, or he would've. So, but that's, that is, actually, when I walk home after these things, it's, and it's fine, but I know what you mean about that, it's very dark, and if you're driving in the rain, it's really tough. So, okay. So Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you. I'll give you a ride home if you need one. Okay.
You know, white cane, that's what I need.
I'd just like to say, not only is this a great piece of work, but it happened in such a short period of time. People talk about, oh, you know, this is big and whatever. It's just a great example of what great minds and hard work can produce in a really short period of time, when you're motivated, because there are these Measure B deadlines, so well done, and, you know, no foot dragging going on there, I could see. Just a couple of nits. There are three post offices that serve, and you've only got two on your map. There's a Dell Avenue post office, back kinda near Visona, which you could probably get to really easily with a bicycle if, you know, there was a way.
Which is in Campbell?
Yes, but it still is a service to Los Gatos.
Yeah, okay, right, right.
So, I know it's a knit, but, okay.
Okay. So we should include the Dell Avenue post office-
Yeah.
-on the maps, okay.
Kind of a dual question. I was curious how your estimates got produced. I don't think I read what, what kind of work was done to produce the estimates.
The cost estimates?
The cost estimates. I mean, that's just a general question. I don't expect a response exactly, but I happen to live on Blossom Hill Road between Union Avenue and Comuna del Cerro. There doesn't appear to me to be any way to produce a sidewalk or a bike lane safely, because it's a steep hill up and a drop-off down, and that you've got 108,000 budgeted for a complex, well, I guess it's called a moderate product, project, to connect east to west fully through Blossom Hill. So I, it just seemed to me like, if you're really, if you're really going to achieve that objective, 108,000, I might have gotten, I might have read the table wrong, but it doesn't seem like that was enough funds to do what you needed to do, which just raised the general question for me, how, how solid are these estimates? So what's your fact?
Yeah, and just, they're, they're very much planning-level estimates. They were done by Placeworks. They have in-house landscape architects and some amount of expertise in designing bike and ped facilities. They were not heavily vetted by the public works staff, so I think they, they really should be taken as order-magnitude, planning-level estimates. I think your comment on Blossom Hill is a good one, which I've noted, and it may be that that estimate needs to be revisited, because it is really challenging getting a, a facility that's comfortable in that area.
I mean, I'm uncomfortable seeing somebody walking, let alone on a bike, and it's just really, okay, so the last question, so back to the estimates. If you, if you would put a caveat in there that says these are planning-level magnitude, perhaps low estimates that need to be reevaluated, because it gave me the impression that they were quite doable in terms of overall cost, until I got to that line, and then I thought, oh, okay, these aren't, these are, these are kinda not real, real good numbers, maybe. And then my last comment is, I didn't see in there a plan to reevaluate once projects got implemented, so, you know, there's a, there's a plan check due, and then-
There actually is one of the, one of the significant sort of metrics or goals is that annually, we're gonna come back to the, we intend to come back to the BPAC to kind of assess the progress, how have we, what projects have we implemented, what projects have we not? Do we wanna rejigger the priorities? So that sort of annual evaluation and update is incorporated into the plan as one of the goals and objectives of the plan.
So my question was less to do with the progress of implementing the projects-
Okay.
But do the projects work? So what, you did a count, you know, a vehicle count, or bike count, or ped count?
Right.
Or accident count?
And in fact-
And then, what's, what's, what's the result of having put in and making?
And in fact, one of the reasons, one of the pri, one of the primary reasons for doing the counts was to get a baseline, and so, as we talked with the commission on this, our intent is that annually, we'd go back and we'd do counts, bike and ped counts, and so we could see in three, five, seven, 10 years, are more people biking and walking? So that, that was really important for us to get that baseline, because that's, and there'll be a lot of different components. So if we wanna see if more people are generally walking and biking, we'll have a baseline with which to evaluate that.
I would, and maybe I didn't see it, but I would just recommend that you do add something that says "follow-up," that says, okay, we're gonna implement these, and we're gonna double-check to make sure that they actually work. Are they reducing, are they, you know, are they meeting the objectives that you set out? Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Given my history with this, I'm not gonna make a lot of knit comments, because I think it's really important that we get this thing through and have it in the books, and it can always be modified later. And to that point, I wanted to say, I cannot tell you how happy I am to see this thing coming to fruition, because I spent years on the Bicycle Advisory Committee before it came, became to be the commission, and I was pushing for this plan. I was the VTA BPAC rep for four years. I sat on the funding committee for the, for the, you know, this big round of projects, and, and we were only trying to get one project from Los Gatos, and it was the Highway 9 connector to the Los Gatos Creek Trail, and it did not make the cut primarily because we didn't have a bike and pedestrian plan, and there are some other reasons. We didn't have counts, we didn't have all these things that you could prove. So I cannot tell you, and my fellow commissioners, how important it is that we get this thing through, even if it's not perfect, and that we don't do anything to stand in the way, and, you know, because this is gonna be a good thing for Los Gatos, and, you know, and I also felt that, looking at the amount of community input that went through, I feel pretty comfortable, and I didn't feel like I needed to go second-guess what was- pretty comfortable, and I didn't feel like I needed to go second-guess what was on the priority list, because it seemed like there was a really good process for collecting input. There was a lot of input taken. I did have a question about the state of the document. I know you got all that online input, but then there was a hearing last week at the B-PAC, right? And then there was a, so the state of the document, does it reflect all the comments up until it was shown to the B-PAC last week?
Correct.
Or is there still...
No, and so, that's a good, that's a good question. So the document reflects input up until the B-PAC meeting, and the B-PAC's input, the input, any input that we receive through our online mapping tool, as well as comments from the commissions and the council, will get incorporated in the final document in an appendix.
Okay, and then...
An additional appendix, or it'll be added to the appendices.
Perfect. Then I had another question just about the review process, and it might well have been in the document and I missed it, you know, because I didn't have, go through each and every page in a lot of detail, but there's many references to VTA in there, and, you know, we often have VTA review big projects for transportation impacts, and then the VTA/B-PAC actually reviewed, you know, if jurisdictions submitted projects to check if they're, you know, good for bike and ped. So my question is, have they looked at this plan, or is it on the timeline for them to look at it? Because VTA's in a big connector to all sorts of funding, including the Measure B funds, and so their blessing on this plan would be important. I assume that they may have already looked at it, but...
We have not asked VTA to review our Bike and Ped Master Plan. What we are doing is part of the, one of the appendices, which isn't in the draft that you've seen, is going to be what's called an ATP checklist, which is Active Transportation Program. That's what the state has set forth within the Streets and Highway Code, and it was specific criteria that a bike and ped master plan has to meet, and components that have to be incorporated in it in order to be deemed complete and eligible to meet those requirements that you have a plan in place for funding. So we're complying with the ATP guidelines, and we'll have a checklist in here, but we did not intend to ask VTA to review our plan for us. We have had coordination with VTA and the county on coordinating this with their update of the countywide bicycle master plan, which they're doing currently, but we're not asking them to review it.
I wouldn't want to put it in the timeline of getting this complete, but I definitely would put it in the comments that, I mean, my recommendation, having, you know, been in that role for such a long time, that it would be good for the town in terms of future funding opportunities to make sure that at least someone at VTA took a look at it. And again, I wouldn't put it ahead of trying to get the thing finalized, maybe they're reviewed after it's done, but I, you know, and they're happy to do it, and they have some very, very skilled, smart people that have been through this process before that, you know, might have some comments that we hadn't thought of.
Commissioner Badami?
So I echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. I found the plan to be very comprehensive, very well-executed, thank you very much, and long overdue. So if we can reduce traffic, improve safety, encourage a healthy lifestyle, get grants, it's just a win-win.
I'm not going to add anything. I think you've been very thorough. Now, I wasn't quite sure, however, with the vice chair, because you said you had, I'm not encouraging this, but I wasn't sure you were through.
I had 33 more points, but...
We're all leaving, but you go right ahead.
No, they were covered. The report's extraordinary.
Okay, so I think we're now in a position just to say we're accepting this. I don't know whether you need a motion or not. Okay, so that being the case, we're, the record will reflect that we have basically said it's a wonderful report, the work has been done in a great fashion, the timeliness of it is very good, and we're all anxious to see that the various dates are met, and we can see that you're doing everything possible to do that. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, it's really great to get the positive feedback on this, and I do think it's been a real partnership with, particularly with the B-PAC. They've invested a lot of time in this, and it's great to come out with our sort of debut, if you will, and get the positive feedback. So thank you very much, and thanks for taking the time to look at the report.
All right, thank you again. Do we have anything further from staff?
We do not.
Apparently, we can adjourn, so we are adjourned.